All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Uh, before we stand for the pledge, I want to induce our student for tonight leading our pledge. It's Valdez Wilburn. He's an eighth grade student here at Fremont Middle School, and he is the son of Melinda Woods. So if we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance and Valdez will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The republic which stands one nation under God. And it is legal with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You're welcome. Let's mine up for this video, man. Let's go. That's right.
All right, it's nice to get back into the swing of having a student come in, lead the pledge every time we have a board meeting. So, um, with that roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom.
Here.
Ms. Lehman.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Nally.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held August 25th, 2025, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Could I, or, uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom. Yes, Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved. Moving on to legislative report. Don.
Yes, uh, wanted to mention a few things. Most of them are, were in the, uh, facts in a flash that was, uh, sent out to board members August 25th. Uh, one of the items that I wanted to mention, which, um, you know, a lot of times we complain about, uh, the general assembly and some of the actions that they're taking. I think this is one that, in my mind, we can buy into, and that is the state commissioned a study to evaluate the needs of economically disadvantaged students, uh, and addressing their needs and the cost of those services. And, uh, the, the full study is available. If, uh, by clicking the, the link there, but the nice thing was is it shows that, uh, we are, as a state, we are underfunding the disadvantaged students, uh, by $3,294 per, uh, per year. Uh, and it's really calling for an investment, like 48% increase. And so if that comes to fruition, obviously that's a positive, I think, for us as a district. You know, for those, uh, children who are in economically disadvantaged situations. Um, it allows us to have more dollars, and this is tied into, um, replacing the current disadvantaged pupil impact aid. So, uh, hopefully I'm not missing anything on that, but, uh, it, it looks like that it's a positive, that it's something's being tried and done. Also, the governor's, uh, work group that he put together, uh, had a presentation. Um, I think it was a couple of weeks ago now, uh, and it was, uh, from, the fair school funding work group, and they presented and talked about, uh, several topics. But obviously one of the main topics they talked about was, uh, residential property owners and, and the taxes that are, that are paid. And so they did have some of those discussions. Also, um, I wanted to mention, um, our, our representative, uh, has sponsored three new bills. Um, and I guess they're calling them, uh, taxpayer freedom trilogy. And there's an act one, two, and three, and, um, and those are dealing with, um, one, um, House Bill 420, uh, as proposed is talking about disallowing and eliminating, continuing levies, uh, by 2030. Uh, the second one, uh, deals with, electors being able to reduce unvoted property taxes by a referendum vote. And then the third item, uh, talks about, this is the one that talks about, um, an increase, would increase the approval threshold required for passage of certain property taxes. And obviously when we're talking now, you know, 50, 50% or 50% point plus one vote, uh, will pass, which means a majority of the, um, of the electors have said, this is a good thing. If something like that is kicked into, obviously, uh, at 55 or 60%, it's going to make it virtually impossible to, you know, uh, get to those, some of those levels. And so I think, you know, um, we definitely need to be part of proactive in talking, uh, to our legislators, and especially those that are, uh, sponsoring and, uh, co-sponsoring, uh, those types of bills. So I, I kind of wanted to share that. Um, and then the third thing, uh, just wanted to make a statement regarding, uh, vouchers. Um, I think there was, uh, an article that talked about, um, like the state of Missouri. Um, there was a judge that basically said, uh, vouchers are unconstitutional. And he did not say vouchers are unconstitutional. You have to stop it immediately. What he said, uh, is the same thing that our Ohio, um, uh, and Ohio judge said was they're unconstitutional, but let it run the appellate, uh, system, you know? And that's fine, but what ends up happening so often in that appellate system, it just drags it out. You know, you go to that next level, then you, and then finally to the Supreme Court, you know, and, um, and then in the course of that time, the bills, bill, the questions change. So I think it's really important again that we keep track of that and, um, you know, I definitely, and you know, I know we all are strong, uh, supporters of public schools. We really need to continue to be a part of, uh, the voucher system of understanding what's going on. And I think it was, uh, whereas Missouri, uh, one of the things I was reading, it said, um, they're talking about $51 million is their investment in that the voucher system. And, uh, that's like for one year. Well, the state of Ohio currently, uh, in this next biennium is 1.5 million, so over two years. So again, 750 million as compared to 51 million. So our state really has made a significant investment. And, you know, when that investment happens, it also means it's coming off the same line item as our public schools, you know, uh, it's taking dollar for dollar away from what could be helping our public schools throughout Ohio. So, um, so I'll continue to keep you informed of any changes, but just wanted to mention those areas. If anybody has any comments.
Where do we start?
Or just.
Once again, they just put the cart before the horse. Uh, it's great to talk about levies and taxes, property taxes and everything else. Changing percentage of approval. Are we going to do that across the board? Or is it just going to be for levies? I mean, you know, I mean, our state representatives and senators gonna have to go with the same approval percentage that a levy does.
Right.
You know, um, but it's great to talk about everything, but no one has come forth with an answer of, let's fix how we're going to fund this stuff first, then we'll get rid of that stuff.
Because otherwise it feels like a very pointed attack on.
Public education. Right. Yet we can help spend what $600 million on a Cleveland Brown stadium?
Right.
But we're going to eliminate, um, it, they want public schools to fail. I mean, that's the bottom line.
Yeah.
And they can do everything they want to, and they just want it to fail.
Well, and it's very scary to, you know, when we hear that and then realizing that, um, putting, uh, again, uh, when we're affecting how taxes are collected and paid, and what would end up happening with a lot of these scenarios, it's going to throw it back to the local and local property taxes. And we know property taxes are, you know, the voters are not just going to click their fingers, say, hey, this is a good idea. You know, we have to sell them on it, obviously, but where are those dollars that are being taxed in our community? Going to the state, are they flowing back to us? And what we're seeing is some of those dollars are now flowing to, uh, those other, uh, entities.
Right.
Uh, you know, and, and I think, again, we're in scary times.
Yeah. Funding public schools is not the job of the local person. Funding public schools is the job of the state of Ohio.
Right.
That's in our constitution.
Exactly.
So why are they going to put it back on levies for our local community? That's not our job. We pay our state taxes. The state should fund public schools.
It's for failure.
Yes.
It's for failure.
But yeah, absolutely.
Oh, boy. Next.
We better move on. We could be here all night.
That's all I had.
All right, thanks, Don. Uh, no walk on items tonight.
No, sir.
No one from the community wanted to speak, so we don't need to worry about that. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Good evening, everyone. Um, I just have a few things. Um, the wonderful Gina Heinlein has left a newsletter for all of you. If you did not receive yours in the mail, um, there's a copy for you that did go out to our, um, greater community this last week. And a lot of good information, a lot of kickoff information for the school year and end of summer, um, within those pages. So, um, I think it's a, another well-done, uh, communication that we can really share a lot of good information on. So I wanted to make sure to share that with you. Um, we do, or we currently do have a board meeting scheduled for Monday, November 17th. Um, due to the OSBA Capitol Conference, we will be in Columbus on that time. So what we would like to suggest is that we would move that meeting, um, November meeting to Monday, November 10th at 6:00 PM here, um, and just shift that up a week, and we'll put out a public, um, notification as well. If that change works for all of you, um, we'll just go the week before Capitol Conference. Um, I sent out with, uh, my weekly last Friday, um, some information about the work sessions and just kind of wanted to make sure that everybody saw that piece. Um, it was, it's been several years now where we, you as a board, we as an administrative body, um, looked at that second board meeting of the month as an opportunity to educate ourselves, um, wholeheartedly, as well as share information with our community. So in the past several years, we've really had a variety of topics that were, have been shared. Um, we've looked at individual grade levels and content areas. We have looked at departments within, um, the district. Most recently last year, we shared out, um, our current strategic plan in the process of revamping and reviewing with everyone to move us forward to develop our new strategic plan. Um, so what I would like to suggest to you is that we would use our work sessions this year, and I'll create a schedule where we will highlight individual buildings. Um, I will work with our building administrative teams and, um, ask them to brainstorm some things that are happening in their buildings that may be aligned to their building plan and their work to keep our strategic plan moving forward. Um, or some things that are just going really, really well, and we want to share that message with. So I think every month you'll get, um, obviously you'll get a message from a different building, um, with a different administrator. But I also feel like we will get a different snapshot of the happenings of the district. Um, I'd like to very much leave that open to my administrative teams in the buildings to decide their topic and who comes with them, and you may, they may involve students, they may involve staff. Um, but I think it will be a really nice opportunity to have a sharing of the, the entire district piece by piece. Um, so if that, if there's no objections to that, we'll move forward to that and start that next, at our next meeting on September 22nd.
Sounds good.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, and then the, the last thing that I had, I just wanted to share, um, Mr. Norris at the high school has shared, um, a challenge with his parents in his building, um, asking them, and, and Mrs. Parker has followed suit for her middle school parents. And we have asked our, our parents of our student athletes to be top-notch fans when we are out and about. Um, certainly when we are home in our own facilities, um, but most definitely when we are traveling, the traveling team. It's a challenge that we are asking for all of our community to step in with, um, and to share that information. And I know that I shared with you, and I really just would like to take that opportunity to also share with our community. A call length, this, two weeks ago now, um, our high school football team played at Sandusky, and we pulled out a wonderful win, and it was a fantastic evening for any of you that were there with us. Um, but I am just thrilled, thrilled, and I was the proud mama of a whole lot of people in the stands. Of our student population, of our players, of our coaches, of our cheerleaders, our band. We had received, um, a wonderful acknowledgement from a community member from Sandusky. Um, she is a current grandmother in Sandusky. She is a, she is in an alumni of the system. Her children graduated from the system. So a lot of layers to her connection to Sandusky High School. Um, and for those of us that are connected to Fremont City Schools or Sandusky City Schools in any capacity, you feel that. As soon as you say those two words, you feel that. It takes you to a whole nother place. Um, so the fact that she felt moved enough to share her thoughts with us, I thought was just fantastic. She congratulated our band for being respectful and upright students. She congratulated our cheerleaders, our football team, our fans. It was a wonderful, wonderful note to receive. Um, so I want to take that and I want to run with that. And I really want to challenge, continue that challenge to our parents, to our community, that there are lots of opportunities for you to come out to support our student athletes. Um, but I challenge you to make sure that we are always acting in the manner of a respectful little giant, regardless of who you are in our community or our building or our district. Um, but that's our challenge. So we want that behavior from everyone in every location. Um, so I just wanted to reshare that with you and, and make sure that you were aware of that challenge. Um, that I, we will continue to, throughout the school year, to keep coming back to that. I think that it's a very positive piece.
I think that, that's excellent, and I think making sure that the students hear that letter too, you know, and, you know, it's, it's good for us, but they need to know that somebody's watching and somebody's aware of that behavior.
Yes.
And, and that's, I mean, it speaks so well, just knowing, you know, the history between the two schools.
Yes, very much so. Thank you, Mr. Nally. Mr. Norris did share that with his staff and our coaches, um, so that they too can
Right.
reiterate that to our student athletes.
Super.
It was powerful. It was very, very well received. That is all I have this evening. Um, if you're okay, Mr. Price, I'll continue on.
Yep.
Great. Item number one, if we could please consider the approval of donations. Um, the Amcor backpacks and supplies, if you remember, we've been planning with this, Mrs. Abernathy ran point on this project. Um, Amcor donated a backpack full of the backpack of the school supply list for the first graders. One for every one of our students, and they brought those into open house. Um, and they had the representatives from their organization in our buildings for open house. They got to hand them out to families and kids. So they had a good time doing it, um, and our first graders were thrilled to receive that. So that's a wonderful partnership with Amcor. Um, Gira Sauer, ProMedica, and the VFW Post have once again restocked our supply of American flags. Um, they are very generous to making sure that all of our classrooms, um, and all of our buildings have beautiful flags to display and utilize with the pledge of allegiance every day. And then they partner with us with, we get one that needs to be respectfully disposed of, they take that and, and do that for us. So, um, wonderful partnerships there.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Um, items number two and three, I would ask, uh, for your approval for the contracts, um, for our school resource officers. Um, there are no changes to the contracts from last year, just a, a update of timeframe. And we do have one deputy that comes from the sheriff's department for us and two of our police officers that come to us from the Fremont Police Department. Um, and again, just a reminder that they serve a huge role for safety and security of our building, um, as well as the advantage of the relationships that they build with our students, um, as they're in our buildings. So those three individuals do a really, really great job for us.
Can I get a motion to approve items two and three, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion?
I would just like to, um, tag along with something that, uh, Mrs. Hurt said earlier, um, about being at the Sandusky game. It was really nice to see our, our school resource officers present, um, and some other law enforcement officers, local, um, present at the game. I know we have one out here somewhere, but, um,
Officer Vayr and Officer Vasquez were both there.
Yes, so I, I appreciated seeing, uh, seeing them. Um, and I think that is helpful for the kids as well, to see a familiar face, um, to help them stay in line.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number four, if you would consider approval for our varsity softball to, um, take a trip, uh, over spring break of next year, um, for a training session.
Can I get a motion to approve item four, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Same as what they did last year, so.
Different location, very similar setup.
It seemed to go well last year for everybody, so.
Very positive.
Good experience.
Very good experience, so. Yep.
And they're taking the chartered buses?
Um, I believe last year they used to school vehicle vans, but they paid their, their fundraising, then pays for all of that.
Right.
Right, roll call, please.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Um, the next item is, uh, to, for you to consider approval of our FFA students to attend a trip. This is their state trip, but it is an overnight trip. That's why I bring that to you, um, for approval here. Um, they will be, it's a leadership opportunity for them within here in the state. Uh, all of their new officers go, and I think new to FFA go. I think it's how that state one runs. They go every year, pretty much.
Okay. I see on the agenda, just clerical. So there's, those two items don't have an item number, so as I go through, I'm going to change.
Okay, so that was.
Does it jump down to item five is down for?
Seven. Okay.
So this will be, um, can I get a motion to approve item five, please?
So moved.
Uh, did we do four?
Ms. Lewis.
I'm sorry, who'd you say?
Oh, Ms. Lewis.
Oh.
Motion, sorry.
I'm bad.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved.
Um, item number six, then, um, same group of students, but this is their national event. So they go, uh, out of state for this one, and again, it's an overnight trip, um, that is completely paid for by them. Um, but we was, your approval would support our students to attend that event.
Can I get a motion to approve item six, please? Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Excuse me. Item number seven, um, we have the resignation, uh, retirement and resignation of two staff members. Um, Tina Moses will be retiring at the end of the school year. Um, long time coming, lots of years, uh, and an excellent, excellent math teacher for many, many students, um, in our community. And Leah Eastep is resigning her position, um, earlier in August. Item number eight, uh, we have some appointments, starting with some certified staff substitutes, as well as a custodial position and some support staff substitutes. I would like to note with you, um, under the support staff substitutes, Deborah Sorg is listed with an asterisk. Um, I'm happy to say that all of her materials have come in, so we will remove that asterisk and do a full hire this evening. Um, she is currently, uh, gonna sub for us, but she's already employed with our North Point Partners and is a bus aide for us. So she's been working and, and doing things well, so we're going to add her on our sub lists. And times that she's available, we might grab her up. Um, item number seven, we begin with some supplemental contracts. Um, and there are several of those. These are, again, are all, um, extra positions outside of the instructional day for the student. So it may be that for those focus interventions, provide some additional tutoring that takes place during the school day. Um, but it's an extra for our students, and then you'll see a lot of our coaches and club advisors listed there. Item number eight, we again have some of those supplemental contracts for our lay staff joining us. Item number nine, same thing, we have some special event workers there. Item number 10 are just two status change, um, to some salary pieces.
All right, so actually that'll be item 12 to finish off. No, you're all right. I got it.
Okay, good. I'm sorry.
So can I get a motion to approve items seven through 12, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion?
On the, uh, focus intervention tutor.
Mm-hmm.
Who determines like hours and schedules and stuff?
Um, all of that would be arranged by the building principal. Um, those positions run through Mrs. Abernathy's department. Um, so we have a set dollar, um, that we budget with, and then the building principals create the schedule as to the need of their building. principals create the schedule as to the need of their building based on their, their building data, what grade levels, how much time, what content areas are necessary for each individual year. So there's fluctuation from year to year.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item 13, right? If you would please approve Jana Franks as a clinical fellowship mentor for this year. Jana is one of our speech and language therapists that work in our district, and she is going to be mentoring an incoming person that's going to work underneath her.
Can you get a motion to approve item 13, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Report of the Treasure.
Good evening. I'm happy to announce that we are closed out of the month of August in my department and now rolling in September. Weird to say, but, and as crazy as this is gonna sound, any of you that know the cycles of school finance, I'm already starting to work on our five-year forecast because it's no longer a five-year forecast and the deadline's now October 15th, I believe. Thank you to our legislators. And there's a lot of joking around as to what that actually is going to be called because there was a lot of changes to the forecast in this legislation bill as well. So I just know you are all gonna be so excited when I report on it. So just, I know you're just waiting on pins and needles for Megan's forecast.
Is it still five years or no?
No, it's three.
Three now?
Yes.
Which, at least that's a plus because year four and five meant nothing anyway.
Like, that's where it kinda got a little.
Yeah.
I mean, does it really? Never mind. We won't go there. So I will be so happy to say this. I will be out of the district next week. Everybody's still gonna be able to reach me if needed, but I will be in Portugal. So, but I have warned all directors, I still can get into SC view and deny purchase orders. So nobody, and Justin will also be in charge, and he's not any nicer than I am. So.
It will not.
I have my.
Spending money.
I have my backup in place, and he will hold the line on not spending any extra money while I'm gone. So with that, if we can move on to my two items for approval.
Okay.
The first is some appropriation changes. These are funds that the different athletics raised last year from their fundraising, and they missed getting these appropriated before the beginning of the year. So we're just adding those in so that those kids can spend the money that they worked really hard on raising. You'll notice that the girls softball, oh yeah, and that's a rather large dollar amount, and that's gonna really help them in their efforts for their trip this summer.
Can I get a motion to approve item 14, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Okay. And then item number 15 tonight is always the worst thing for treasure to have to present to their board. Heads did roll last week when this came up. But in all seriousness, we did the employee that this, I don't know, was due to, we did sit down, have a discussion, the explained the proper protocols to make sure this does not happen in the future. They called for service and didn't check to make sure that a purchase order was in place first. So we have discussed it with them and let them know the importance of this and that we can't let this happen again. And they've, I feel like they're on our pa, on the same page as us now with those rules.
Understand to go forward.
Yep.
Can I get a motion to approve item 15, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion?
Can we discuss what would be the next step if it happened again, or just let it lay how it is?
That would be determined by their supervisor and HR. I mean.
And there potentially could be additional discipline if action continued.
Okay. Yeah. If, I mean, if there's blatant disregard for these rules, then there is discipline, like.
More kinds of kinds would call.
They don't get to ignore my rules.
Thank you, girls.
I, I think in the three years that I've been on the board, I think this is only like the second then and now.
Yeah, we work really hard to make sure these don't happen.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. All right, moving on to board member communications. Done.
I just wanna, for the public and all of us, just with school zones, just out of schools in session, need to slow down. I know sometimes when I'm going through and you get down to 20 and that car's on your, on your bumper behind you, you know, you just have to continue at 20. And, and, you know, force them to realize that they need to slow down also. And just watch.
Can I add on to that real quick? Why you, just while you're right there with that? Because I forgot, and it was something that I did want to mention. So thank you. I appreciate you triggering my brain. I had the good fortune and fun to ride one of our elementary buses last week. And while I was on the bus, and the bus was clearly stopped with the red stop sign out and students exiting the bus, a vehicle ignored all of that and came right past the bus. And so I completely agree with what you're, you're stating, and I would strongly encourage our community to be very thoughtful. Now that school is definitely back in session, that we have little ones that are moving and big ones that are coming and going off of our school buses. We transport a lot of children every single day. And the driver that I, the bus I was on, the driver was very clear. She reminded the students, you know, wait for my hand. They have signals. They have, they teach the children. So thankfully, that child was standing here and was waiting until the driver put her hand up and pulled them across.
Wow.
Because that car came right past here. So just, we really, really do. So not only those school zones where it's 20, there's a reason why it's 20. There's a reason why we are asking our community and parents to slow down just a little bit when they're driving by us there, but really, really be mindful of the, the stopping behind the buses, waiting, making sure that all of the children have crossed safely. So, thank you. I didn't mean to jump on your comments.
No, no, I'm glad you said that. Yeah. I mean, it's all about.
You helped me remember.
It's all about the safety of our kids.
It really is.
The other, the other thing actually throws back to you is a question. I was reading some, some comments about the new math on Facebook, and it was just a couple parents, and they weren't necessarily our parents. Yeah, not, not necessarily local. What, what supports or guidance are we giving parents to help them help their child when they come home? Because you always hear those comments, you know, with this new math, how am I supposed to help this kid? I don't know. Are we providing some helps and guidance?
Absolutely. Great point. Thank you. I would strongly encourage any of our parents because doing homework sometimes with your child in today's world looks a little bit different than how we may have learned. We may come up with the exact same answer at the end, but the process and the thought process and the completion of the project, the math problems many times, is different. So I would encourage if a parent is unsure how to help their child and would like to hear it again, or would like to hear, how did my child hear it, so that I can then help, to reach out to their child's classroom teacher, or their building principal, and they will get that connected. We do have a couple of our elementary buildings, all of our elementary buildings will do some Title I family nights throughout the course of the year. And the focus of those sometimes do change, but sometimes it's just that. So I would also encourage families and parents that when you get those invitations to your child's school for a family night that maybe has information about how to better understand or how to help, to make sure that they're attending those because there's good information to share.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the other trigger for me was the, I think there was a newsletter that was sent out to us as board members that talked about a presentation on the new math. I think it's later this week. And, and, and it's the like big scope of new math, not just here in Fremont. And that, that kinda made me think about, you know, how does that parent, you know, if they need help, where, where is that?
Absolutely. Please ask.
I think it's good what you just said. Thank you.
Thank you.
To go along with that, as a parent that had that, I mean, when I grew up, if it was 15 times 12, it was just 15 times 12. There's not all these other steps off to the side.
It didn't turn into art class, too.
No, no, not at all.
You have an array and a table.
But I had asked the teacher, I didn't come in for a parent conference. I just happened to know this teacher and ask them. And so if parents do have questions, please ask because our teachers are wonderful at saying, yep, I understand. You did it the easy, the short way, the old way, whatever you want to call it. And they can kinda help you through the understanding of everything to help. So when your student does, when your kid asks you, it's like, oh, yeah, no, I remember. I mean, I can.
Yeah.
But yeah.
I think a lot of parents are afraid to ask because they feel dumb. Or, I mean, I, when it came, I think you're the principal oldest, one of my oldest son, you guys came out to lattice and all that, the math. And I literally got ahold of his teacher. I said, I need to make an appointment with you because we're gonna go over this at the board together, with me included. So we went in there and he showed me, and, and he says, and I understand that you can get, you can solve that problem the way that you were taught, but I'm gonna show you how. They have to have on paper the way that it's supposed to be solved for this method. And I said, all right. So I sat there probably for a good hour and I learned.
And many times, the idea behind doing the math problem in more than one way.
Yeah.
The idea behind that is that not all children think in the same manner. Not all children will compute that math problem in the same logical step. And some kids will need to see it in a different way. Some kids will need to manipulate it to figure it out. Some, so educationally, if we can instruct five ways to figure out 15 times 12, then our hope is the entire class can pick up on at least one of them, right? And everybody can get the answer and be able to take that a step further and not just compute it, but to be able to have understanding as to what they came up with, how did they come up with that? What does that mean curricularly? That's sometimes the bigger aspect because that then leads us into the problem solving and the thinking outside the box and all those things that we want to make sure that our graduates have.
Yep.
My grandson, he could look at the problem. He could just give you the answer, but he couldn't do what they wanted him to do. So he was really struggling. And my mom was struggling. And when Ashley went through it, I'm like, that's not right. This is how you do it. I'm like, that's not, I don't know what they're teaching you, but so we fought.
Yeah.
I never did learn how to do it. And the other three, I don't know what their math looked like because they fought with their dad at the table. I was like, I'm not dealing with it. So.
Thank you. Usually one more than one way. So thank you. Really appreciate that.
That's all I had.
Okay. Sarah?
I guess I just want to encourage all the parents to look at the newsletter that came home. Especially, all the content is important, but the, the first two things I think are most important to the parents in our community. Parents Square, I am definitely gonna speak as a parent and not necessarily a school board member right now. Love. I, I like it a lot because I don't have six apps. I don't have a band app. I don't have a cheer app. I don't have a, you know what I mean, the club app, all these things to manage. I have one app that has all the information. Once you get used to it, it kind of, like the daily stuff, kind of reads like social media, other social media apps. So you can just get your day's worth of information by scrolling, which is neat as well. And it's connected to final forms, which is advantageous as well. So any extracurriculars that you're, when you complete final forms, any extracurriculars that you have assigned or designated for your child, the information for that pours into Parents Square. So if you haven't signed up for Parents Square, if you're nervous or intimidated, see somebody in the district to help you, whether it's a building principal, I'm sure at the district office, there's assistance for that. The next page with the mission and vision statement, lots, we've talked about this for the last few meetings, lots of hard work went into creating these mission and vision statements. And that work wasn't done just so that we can have something really neat to slap up on a, on a poster in the schools or something. These are living, working statements that we should all be held accountable to, whether you're the school board member, the superintendent, the treasurer, the fifth grade teacher, the custodial staff, the cook, the bus driver. These are all standards that we should all be held to. And we want to make sure that our, our families in the district feel, feel that these things are happening. So please make sure that you read, read these things. And, and then make sure that they're happening for your, for your kiddo and your, your family.
I couldn't interrupt. I was talking to my daughter who works in a school district down in Georgia, and she was telling me that at the beginning of every board meeting, they read, somebody read the mission statement. And I thought that, you know, for our viewing audience, and for us to hear it more, and so that it really sinks in, you know, that might be something I would suggest we take a look at. I'll do it. If you call on me, I, I'll do it. But, but let's, maybe can we take a look at that? I mean, that might be a way to reinforce it to us.
Or at least have it as a graphic, like for the playback, for the live stream.
Right.
To be able to show it, you know, on, on there as well. Sure. Just to piggyback again on what Superintendent Hurt mentioned about our student body. So proud going just around the district from, from everything to start the school year off. The painted parking spaces, kids did an awesome job on that. Driving by to see, you know, full parking lots out here today for a middle school volleyball game. The high school is, you know, packed with a volleyball game. Just keep up the good work. We travel well, too. Like when we go, our, our school is well supported at different events. So I think that's really, really awesome. Congratulations to the Fremont Ross Cheerleaders. They were selected as the 13 ABC Cheerleaders of the Week after last week's game against Perrysburg. So they, they all got to, they had a little spot on the news on Friday night, and this mama recorded it. But that was, that was really neat. And they, they took a, a shot of our student section, which again, for an away game, we had several students there. They were dressed in the theme and, and cheering the team on despite the tough, the tough opponent. Nice environment to be in over in Perrysburg, too. Their band was also very complimentary of, of our band and our fans. Last thing, in the same vein of safety, if, if we could maybe take a look at, when you're exiting Fremont Ross's parking lot onto North Street, that is a right turn only. There is a tiny sign there. I, I would like to maybe. I, I would like to maybe entertain with Mr. Anway, Superintendent Hurt yourself. It is often not obeyed. And it is, it, it will be, it, it is a safety issue. It's not just about keeping the line moving, although keeping the line moving means that the kiddos whose parents do one drop off and they have kids walking to the middle school and also over to the high school. If that line is backed up, a kiddo is going to get hit. You know, there's a potential for that if that line is backed up. Also, God bless Jason Smith and, and the other personnel that are out there every morning directing traffic. It's too much for them to have to get kiddos across the street. Well, and it, and it's a busy time. We have a lot of walkers. We have a lot of bike riders. To have to direct traffic, but also direct traffic. You get the kids across the street and also, you know, try to wave their baton to get the, get the, the people traveling in cars to go to the right and they oftentimes don't listen. So maybe a lit sign. That says like no left turn or something real obvious so that, uh, we don't have a situation.
Thank you. Let's look into that.
Laura?
She wants bright flashers at the top and the bottom of the sign. Or just a whole light inside. I, I challenge anybody to go out there in the, in the morning to see, to see that, you know, it is, we just don't want anything to happen. And there's been a lot of good improvements out there. The sidewalks make a difference and they look wonderful from, you know, the Y past the middle school and, and those things have all made a difference. I think this would just be a, another cherry on top to the improvements for the pedestrians and whatnot. All right, I have to have a shout out. I have a shout out for Mrs. Meek at the Krogan School. For what her media center looks like. So I obviously catch up on Facebook, the school pages. And I said it before last year when I was going through the schools, I think that that's one of the most important parts of the school because each, you know, kids need a place to go and be comfortable and just something that's very warm and they can just go there and hang out and relax, even if they're reading a book or they're just having somebody to read to them or whatever. It's a nice cozy place that they can meet up at. And I've just seen how she decorated and I think she did a wonderful job. She did last year too. They all did and I can't wait to see them all again. But I had just seen her picture in there and I thought Mrs. Meek did a really good job. I just wanted to let her know that it didn't go unnoticed. So.
Pass that on to her. Her learning center is important to her.
Yeah, it definitely caught my eye. And I hope we beat Whitmer Friday. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you, Valdez, for the pledge. He did an amazing job. I was at the, the parade for Labor Day and the band, I love our band. I love the drums. I don't make it to the football games because I don't have anybody to go with. So I don't want to go sit by myself. But I watched them perform in a, in the parade was just, I don't know. It reminds me of when I lived on Stillwall and we'd watch them go down Franklin. You know, run, go watch them. It, I just, our band, I just love them. How's the phones going? There are no phones in schools? How's that happening? Are we doing okay with that?
Doing, yeah, we're doing well.
Cause I see the thing on the news. And one of the schools have these bags that they put them in and they, they lock them with a magnet. But they get to keep the bag, but you can't open the bag. I don't know. Is that what we do or?
We do not do that. No, we have not purchased those yander bags, I believe they're called. Currently we have very strong cell phone policies across the district. We tightened those up and rolled those back out this year at the start of the year. And I just checked in with building principals a week or so ago and knock on wood, we're, we're doing okay. Now there are some tweaks to that law that will come January 1st of 2026. So we may have to continue to tighten a few things, but as of right now, students are complying. And it has not been an issue. And if it is a concern, then there's also, the handbook also includes information about what those consequences would be for the students. The first time, the second time, you know, or if it's repeated and we'll deal with them individually in those situations.
I, I think the high school students have been made aware about this is what it is now, but in January, this is going to look different. So shout out to Mr. Norris and the crew for being transparent, you know, with the kiddos. And I think we've been ahead of this for, the talk started a couple of years ago. And I think we've been ahead of the game as far as making sure that you pare down the cell phone usage. So.
Good, glad to hear that. I don't have any kids that have cell phones in the district. So I don't know what it's like. So just hoping it was going okay or good.
Yeah, it really is. It's going well. I, I think so much of the importance there relies on the communication. And we've communicated with students and we've communicated with families that they just don't have a place during the instructional day.
And I agree.
We are, we have enough devices. If we need some technology pieces, we have those for our students. They don't need their personal cell phone.
Good. And then congratulations on Tina Moses on her retirement. And good luck with the, the football team this weekend.
Thanks to the community for the donations. We always do. Appreciate everything that our community does for us in, in those ways. Piggyback off of Sarah for Parent Square. As a parent and as a coach and as a board member, it has been pretty seamless. Things just get added in and it's all right there for you to look at. So from an adult standpoint, I like it instead of having different apps, team reach and this and that and everything else. Like where do I need to go for this one again? Now it's all in one place. So that does make it easier.
Nice move.
As I was looking at our website, just looking at different upcoming events. If anyone in the community is looking for something to do, I encourage you to just go to our website and look at what's going on just for the schools. We're getting into that time where sun's going down earlier. It's getting cooler at night. We're not doing the stuff in the evening as much. If you're just sitting at home and you want something to do, there's usually an activity, a sporting event, a concert, something is going on somewhere. And a lot of times it's no charge. So there's a lot of things that they could see and do and see all of our students participating in and and having fun with. So with that, no reason for executive session. So could I get a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. Meeting's adjourned.